This time, I'd like to call to order the February 2007 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that Mike Bardwell and Alan Kraus are absent. All other commissioners are present. I'd also like to call attention to everyone, you do have an updated copy of the subdivision ordinances and our commission bylaws. I'd like to thank Ms. Patrice for getting those to us and the good job she did in making them for us, so. Item three on our agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the January 10th, 2007 meeting, and I noticed we do have some amendments.
Make a motion to approve the revised minutes.
I have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow.
Second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item four, the public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on any item that is not up for public hearing, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll have your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak during the public comment period, okay? Item five, public hearing for granting approval to the following family partitions. 5A, Thomas DeGeneres Jr. Properties, tract G-1-A and H-2-A.
My name is Scott Lobel. I'm with Lobel Engineering and Land Surveying. First question I want to ask is, am I the only man tonight that should be here, should be with his wife on Valentine's Day and getting in trouble for it?
No, you're not. Others of us are getting in trouble too, Scott. I did forget to say Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Some women are in trouble too for being here.
Well, tonight, I represent Mr. Buddy DeGeneres for his family partition, and we were requesting that you guys approve this. If you have any questions, we'd like to address that at this time.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from commissioners at this time? Okay, if there are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing portion. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and he'll get you three minutes. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Last call. Comments or questions from commissioners? I do have one question. You have seen staff's comments, and those will be addressed?
Yes, sir.
Or they have already been addressed?
They've already been taken care of.
Okay. What's the wish of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell and a second by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5B, Stephen Bateman Property, tract B-3-A, B-3-B, B-3-C.
James Faugu, representing Earls &amp; Associates, and Mrs. Stephen Bateman on the following family partition. The comments made were addressed, welcoming the commission, any questions they have, and asking the commission for approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners? And if there's no comments or questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and he'll get you three minutes. No one wishing to speak. Then I'll go ahead and at least get one in, same as the last time. Comments have been addressed or going to be addressed?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think there was any.
I just noticed one affidavit.
The affidavit transfer.
That was it.
Yes, it was.
What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow.
A second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5C, the Danny S. Claus property, lots V-1-A, V-1-B, V-1-C.
Good evening. Clint Quintmull, representing WJ Quintmull Surveyors, asking for planning commission approval on the Danny S. Claus family partition, the subdivision of lots V-1-A, V-1-B, V-1-C. There was one comment from the consulting agency, is to indicate the zoning district on the boundary that has been shown on this revised plat, and there were no comment from the planning department.
Comments or questions from commissioners? There are no comments or questions, we'll open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and he'll get you three minutes. No one wishing to speak. This time, comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Scott Courtwright, second by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six, public hearing for granting preliminary approval to the following subdivisions. One thing I did neglect to announce at the beginning of the meeting, Parker Place Estates has been pulled from the agenda, so we will not be discussing that this evening. We'll go on to item 6B, the Oaks at Corner View.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Valentine's Day. My name's Wes Wilkerson. I'm with Benchmark Group. We're here to seek approval for a subdivision, primary plat approval, on a subdivision off of Corner View Road. Right now, the property is located east of the intersection of Boudreaux and Corner View. In the big picture of things, it is actually west of Burnside Road, about two miles. This property is 22 acres. It's currently zoned RM. We are not requesting any variances on the property. All the lot sizes has been designed to the minimum standards. The lot density is allowable as 2.5 units to the acre, which would allow 66 slots, and we currently have 52 shown. We did have some drainage and mitigation issues that we had to address with the ERA. I believe all comments have been addressed and satisfied to date, so if you have any questions?
Comments or questions from commissioners?
So, the comment, Michael, on the back page of your document, drainage servitude for the large ditch, that comment's been addressed?
I don't know that it has. I think we're just talking about the tight spot there by Lot 29. Really, until we see the final construction details, we're not certain if he needs more or not, but we're just putting a kind of a bug there to make sure that we look at that.
Any other comments or questions for commissioners?
I've got a question. On your section, when going across, going east or west to east, it looks like this green space is being dug out.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is actually green space, it's not detention?
Well, it kind of serves a dual role. It actually serves three purposes. Currently, part of the site's in a flood plain, so we're using that for mitigation, to dig out for the dirt to fill the lots. Some of it serves as detention, and also, it's going to be used as passive green space. The intention of the developer, I guess as we get into construction plans, is that we'll be able to use that green space during dry weather conditions, and there's even discussions about putting a little pedestrian bridge over the actual ditch section to get from each side of the drainage way, so that can be used as passive green space.
Yeah, because when you look at Note 8, it sounds like you are making both of those green spaces accessible, so I would say you have to have some kind of a bridge or...
Right. Those are going to be worked out during the construction plans. We're not sure exactly how it's going to be designed yet, so.
I have a question too for you. We try to encourage multiple entrances and exits into subdivisions where it all plausible. I certainly like to see that personally. Just curious, why do you not do something adjacent or next to Lot 1? It's vacant now. Why didn't you build that all the way out?
Well, the developer of this, our client, really wanted to try and concentrate on having one entrance. This is not a gated community, so we sat down with planning, and it was their desire to have a future connection to the adjacent property, which sits between ours and Boudreaux Road. So if that ever got developed, then we would have that second connection at that point without forcing us to have another connection along Corner View. At that particular point where you're referring to, there's some site distance issues with regard to exiting and entering the property, because that Corner View's on a road, a curve. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I would just like to say that I really appreciated where you put your sewage treatment plant in the back, away from the middle of a subdivision or away from families. You guys did a great job with that.
Well, thank you.
And I know we don't have a landscape standard right now in Ascension Parish to speak of as far as the oak trees. There's a lot of large trees out there, so there's nothing to say that you can't do what you want to out there, but I'd like to tell you, I certainly would like to see a lot of those saved, and I certainly would like to see you follow the horticultural standard Title III underneath Louisiana State law, and that is to employ the right person to help you save or protect or work around whatever trees you want. In other words, you don't want to say you're going to do something and leave those for amenities and then damage the trees, only to have the homeowners take them out two or three, four years down the road.
Right. Well, the plan tried to encourage preservation of the live oaks, and that was an important factor in terms of our client's objectives. There are a few that are going to have to be taken out because they simply fall in the roadbed construction area, but most of them that we have shown, that are shown on the plan, hopefully, we can work in and around those to the best of our ability in terms of getting driveways and houses situated on those lots. You know, we did want to emphasize that we were trying to preserve one of the oaks actually in the road itself, is kind of a signature oak, you know, on the site as part of the development, so. I'm a landscape architect myself, and I've worked with a couple of certified arbers, so if we need to, you know, employ somebody to take a look at those in detail, then we can.
Yeah, your road there around that oak tree that's called the Common Area, Common Area Oak Tree, for lack of better terms, the road may have to change because you know that that's not near enough root capacity to keep that tree viable.
Well...
As a landscape architect.
Well, actually, there's a couple of ways that you can approach those designs. Cutting the roots and having to dig around the drip line is one approach, but you can actually fill on top of the root system and do an aeration-type system that allows oxygen into the roots without actually having to cut, you know, and sever the tree roots themselves. So, there's some approaches that we can take a look at in terms of how we preserve the tree, so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one more. Lots 10 through 22.
Yes, ma'am.
They go, the backside of them is on the other side of Smith Bayou?
No, ma'am. They're on our side.
It is on your side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up and sign in with the secretary, and he'll get you three minutes to speak. Sir, you wish to speak also? Okay.
My name is Georgiana Carter. I live at 39071 Corner View Road, directly in front of where he's planning to put the subdivision. There's an extremely dangerous curve there. There's an accident in that curve almost two and three times a week, and I would like to know, where is he planning on putting an entrance into the subdivision? And why is it that they're planning on doing a one-family subdivision when directly across from that, they developed, and it's not a one-family subdivision? This curve, years ago, we tried to get the state to, maybe try to get the curve out. I mean, two months ago, I had two accidents in my yard in the curve, and so I would like to know the reason for the subdivision, where you're going to put the streets at to enter the subdivision.
Just so you can understand where the entrance is, here's the plan of the site. Which lot are you?
I'm at 39071 Corner View Clarence Bush. Name should be Clarence Bush.
Right here?
Yes.
Okay. And I think there was a comment made about why we didn't connect our driveway on the second entrance, and that's one of the reasons, was because there are some site visibility issues with that location. Entrance is actually over here, away from where your lot is. Your lot is here, our entrance is over here.
Okay, that would be the entrance near the Jacksons, between the Mears and the Jacksons place?
Well, on the map, it's Rosetta Lee.
Okay, I know Rosetta. Okay, and the sewer is going to be in which direction? Because right now, I'm not in a flood zone, and I really wouldn't like to have water coming in my yard. You know, I've done a lot of work in building up, and I'm not, I don't have a flood problem, and I really wouldn't like to anticipate one.
Part of the requirements for Ascension Parish, and what we had to do, we had to provide a 15-foot drainage servitude along the rear of these lots, which will be adjacent to yours. Unfortunately, for you, everything drains back to Smith Bayou, so we're going to be taking all of our drains to Smith Bayou and discharging at that point. This is going to be a private treatment plant, and the rest of the treatment plants will be down here, closer towards the bayou, away from all the existing residences along Corner View.
No one else signed up, Andy? Comments, questions from commissioners?
I have a question. Can you pull that around?
For you?
Yeah. So you can explain something to me? Okay, look at Lot 18 and 19. The lot lines look like they go across Smith Bayou. So just clarify it for me.
Well, you're right. This other line that you see is actually the center line of Smith Bayou, okay? The actual property...
What line are you showing me?
Right here.
Okay. With the arrow points?
Right. That's the center line of Smith Bayou, okay? The property of, the property line of this site actually goes into the bayou, so, you know, this, the lot owner is actually technically going to own a part of that bayou.
So that lot does cross Smith Bayou, then?
Well, it does cross, in fact, that it goes like on the other side of it.
But it goes to the middle of it?
Yeah, it goes to the middle of the bayou, yeah. And there's a 50-foot drainage servitude that is required along the center line of Smith Bayou, as a non-able area.
Okay. And will the homeowners know that? Is that in?
Well, it'll be on the plat.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and that's the reason I asked the question a little while, a few minutes ago. I was wanting to make sure that fences would not be an issue, that, I mean, we looked at this, and I know there's plenty of room behind there, but I just wanted to make sure fences would not be an issue as far as maintenance on that bayou.
Oh, in terms of erosion and falling down, and, yeah, I mean, that's just something I have to deal with whenever we... Well, I'm not sure what the restrictive covenants of the clients want to be in terms of fencing and things like that. They may not even require the fencing to be put up. You know, it is, if there's a good separation between our property and adjacent property, I'm not sure how familiar you are with the site.
We look at it.
Huge detention area between both sites, and, you know, they may not require them to foot fences, it may just be a personal, not so much detailed, but on a lot basis.
Paige, underneath Lot 11 and 12 and 13, there's a footnote there that says 50-foot drainage servitude from center line of Bayou.
Okay.
So that, and you follow that little dotted hash line, which is kind of confusing amongst all the other dotted hash lines, but it seems to be the one that's above, and it separates
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission? I'll move for approval. Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you, Alan.
Item seven, public hearing to consider the following servitude revocation. Jimmy Golchay, saying that right? Property, lots 2-A-1-A, 2-A-1-B, 2-A-2-A, 2-A-2-B, 2-A-2-C. Bingo.
Can you say that again, Laura?
No, I practiced at saying it that fast. If I say it slower, I'll mess up.
Ellen Jackson with McLean &amp; Associates. We have the letters of new objection from the utility companies servicing this area, and there were no objections, so we're asking for your approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I still have the question, Ellen, and I know we talked about it last time, and maybe it's staff as well, but on the corner there, there's a little piece or little triangle that enters into Josephario Road. It looks like the lot actually and Josephario Road occupy the same space. Is that...
It does. That's just where their property line is.
Is that confusing? Anybody else? Charles, can you...
That's where the property line is.
In the middle of the road is...
And it's just burdened by the road servitude, but you can, you'd see that, there's roads in here. I know you were asking about that. We have, there's roads in the parish where the property's on the other, the property line's on the other side of the road at some time.
Okay, so that's okay.
We've got to show the property line.
Okay. It just looks strange.
I know.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I got a question on servitudes for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots. Servitude of passage. I keep remembering seeing a larger servitude for this particular thing than 20 feet. Am I wrong, or am I right, or...
That's what it came, it was coming to us as a, with another issue. This is separate.
Oh.
Right now, all we're looking at is the revocation of an existing servitude.
Okay.
Utility servitude, and they are proposing a new 12-foot servitude in this place. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and he'll get you three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
We're going to move to recommend approval of the revocation.
A second. I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, second by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item eight, committee reports. 8A subdivision ordinance committee. The subdivision ordinance committee didn't really formally meet last month. We had an opportunity to sit down with some of the representatives of the school board, planning and construction department, who are going to, from time to time, try and attend our meetings. We will be having our meeting this coming Friday at 12:00. We have our strategic planning committee report. Julio, I think you were going to give that?
I'm doing zoning.
You're doing the zoning committee? I don't know who's...
No.
Okay. Was anybody, O'Neil, were you at the strategic planning committee? Okay, so there's no report there. Item nine, new business. We have Mr. Donald Sanji with us this evening, who'd like to take a few moments to address the commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marshawn, for this opportunity. And first of all, before I get into this, I want to, on behalf of both myself and on behalf of the school board, to thank you and tell you how much we appreciate the work that you do. You have a very difficult job, sometimes thankless job, but you do it well, and it, we understand what you're having to do, and we appreciate the work that you do for the parish. The school system, from time to time, gets requested, asked to be a part of some of your decision-making process, maybe, or part of the council, when it comes to development and growth and so forth. So what I'd like to do is take a few minutes at this time, just to clarify what the official position of the school system is concerning some of these issues, and just let you know how we feel about certain things. First of all, our mission, the mission of our school system, is to provide each student a high-quality education necessary to succeed in an ever-changing world. Our mission is to educate children. When it comes to approving developments and so forth, the school board does not take an official position, either in support of or in opposition to any new development. We do work well with the planning commission and with the department. We get a lot of valuable information from you, which helps us in planning and get information about growth trends and plan our future needs, and we do appreciate the assistance that you've given us. From time to time, developers have come to us and offered to donate property to us, and they will come perhaps to you or to the council and say, well, you know, the school system is accepting this donation of property and planning to build a school. I wanted to clarify what we actually do when something like that happens. When they offer to donate property to us, if the site is appropriate, the school system will in all likelihood accept that donation, okay? And we may at some point decide to build a school on that site. Just simply by accepting the donation doesn't guarantee that a school will be built. And of course, the acceptance of the donated land does not amount to approval or recommendation to approve that development, simply because we are accepting donation of the property. But we do, we have certain criteria, and I want to clarify that too, as far as is a donation of property. Whether a site is appropriate, factors that we consider include the following. Is the site in a flood plain? Will there be wetlands mitigation that we'll have to concern ourselves with? Are there other environmental issues? Availability of utilities? Is the site accessible for transportation? And then the appropriate size and shape of the property. When we build a primary school, we like to have 15 acres of property, 15 acres of usable property in a more or less square shape. For a middle school, we require 20 acres, and for a high school, 50 acres of property. So those are our requirements, and then of course, finally, if we decide to build a school, does it fit into our overall parish-wide plan for addressing growth and where schools need to be and where district lines need to be? So when it comes to a donation, we consider all those factors, and as I say, we may accept a donation of a property. At the same time, it does not say that we are coming out in support of approval of that development. uh, coming out in support of approval of that development or, or opposition one way or the other. As I said, the school system does not take a position on that. Uh, it, it's not part of our mission. Uh, we have also been asked, in, in certain cases, uh, for our position on changes in zoning. Uh, for example, there was a piece of property right next to one of our high schools, and developer came and met with us and said, "Look, this is what we want to do. Do you have any opposition to it?" Well, the question we asked, the, the big question that we asked was this: Will this change in zoning result in a net increase of lots, of, of houses? Because that does affect us. Now, i- in general, uh, as, as new people move in, uh, it impacts the school system, and, and we, uh, we've been dealing with that. We will continue to deal with that. But, uh, under current zoning regulations, we, we anticipate that and, and we've got a process for dealing with that. But if someone were to ask us whether we would, uh, approve of or not disapprove of, say, a zoning request that would, would result in, uh, a higher concentration of, of houses, we would, we would in general be opposed to that. And, and the particular developer that, that we met with, uh, I think the, the property under current zoning, uh, regulations would have allowed for 50 home sites. His plan called for, I think, 85 or 90, something like that, so we told him, "No, we would be in opposition to that because it would result in a net increase in the population in that area," and that was one of the, the more overcrowded areas. And I think what he did at that point, he went back and, and changed some things, and he put in some commercial and so forth, and the net result of that was that the total number of homes, residences, went back to the 50, which was allowable by the current zoning. And, and in that case, uh, we told him that we would not have an opposition to that. Not that we would support it, but we wouldn't oppose that. So in general, uh, what I, uh, I came to, just to let you know is that, uh, again, like I said, we, we have no position pro or con as far as development is concerned. Uh, we, we will accept donations of property and possibly use that as, as a school site. And, um, as far as, as, uh, any zoning changes or variances that will result in a net increase or, or a greater concentration of population, that would, we would, uh, we would object to that. We, we would not want that, but, uh, that is the, the position that we have. And I've got a copy that, I'll, I'll, I'll give you copies of, of what I just said here, and we'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Any comments or questions from commissioners for Mr. Sanji?
Okay, well, thank you.
Looked like you, uh, you, uh, you gave the presentation so well. You, you answered any potential questions.
Okay.
And, and Don, I, I want you to understand, I don't think any commissioner sitting up here would ask the school board to oppose or, uh, support any specific development.
It's the developers that are asking.
Oh, yes. I mean, the, now, I, I will say this. I believe that there are general development issues that come up where we, we would like to hear input from the school board.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Because, I mean, it, it doesn't just, uh, it, it has, it has an impact on everyone.
Yes.
Uh, also, as, as development continues, uh, there may be other instances where, uh, school-owned property is adjacent, and as an adjacent property owner, this, you know, the school board does have the right to, uh, come to the meeting and make its position known, because it, it may have, uh...
And we have done that, yeah.
...a detrimental impact, you know? So, uh, I, speaking with Chad and, and Scott, uh, knowing that they're going to attend our meetings and, and we've already had some, shared some information, uh, I think that's gonna help out.
And we appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys, uh, on that, because I, I think we'll, we'll all benefit from that in the long run.
I think so as well.
All right.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll give you copies in there. Thank you, Mr. Sanji. Okay. Thank you. Uh, the, the question was this. As part of our planning process, we did, uh, some subdivision analysis, uh, looking at, at subdivisions and, and counting the number of our students that were in those subdivisions, and we came up with a, with a rough ratio, and it, uh, it worked in the high end, low end. It, it worked in trailer parks. It came to be about the consistent same ratio. For every three houses, uh, that we have in, in your typical subdivision, we'll get one primary school student. For every six houses in the, that's within grades K through 5, for every six houses, there will be one middle school student. For every nine houses, there is one high school student. So you lump all that together, for about every, I, I think it came up to, to a little bit less than two houses, we're gonna get a student in our school system. And we use those numbers. We get the proposed subdivisions in the areas, and then we try to project future enrollment based on those ratios. And it's, it's ballpark. It's not a, not a, a fine, uh, exact, but it's, it's fairly close, and it gives us a, a good idea of where we need to go with our future, uh, building. Yeah, I'll leave the rest to you.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. Item 10 on our agenda, old business. 10A Wesley Place.
Lester McLean with McLean and Associates. Uh, the last meeting, a project was deferred, uh, to wait on a letter from, or an answer from Bill Rue regarding the, uh, drainage servitude and right-of-way dedication and his comments. And, uh, since the last meeting, there has been a letter submitted. I assume that y'all have been given that letter, and, and received that letter. We feel like that we met the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and what he was asking also, and at this time, we ask you to approve the development.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
There's still a comment from, um, ERA about the outfall pipe, 15-inch versus 18-inch. Has that been settled, Sean?
We addressed that at the last minute.
It was modeled as an 18-inch pipe, but they labeled it as 15 on the plat. I'm not certain if it's been corrected on the plat or not, but we can certainly make sure that that is the size that goes into the construction plan.
Okay, as long as y'all are happy with that, then?
I think they handed out a corrected plat at the last meeting.
It's been changed on the plat.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, there are no other comments or questions from commissioners. Public hearing never really closed, so, uh, I'm gonna open it back up to the public. Please understand that we, you know, we, we, there, the comments that we heard last month, we understand, you know, we, we understand those issues. Uh, if you have any new information, yes, we'd like, that's what we'd like to hear. So if you, uh, if you want to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get you three minutes to speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barbara Stapleton. I reside at the end of JB Tompley Road, the dead end of the road. I am an adjacent landowner to the Rodney Sheets Development. The biggest thing that I ask of you tonight, I understand that you're gonna be handed, uh, pictures of my property a little bit later on from another neighbor that I allowed to come out and take pictures of the property in heavy rains. And, uh, the landowner across from me, Mr. Gary DePlessis, who is not on any of the plaques, he's not an adjacent landowner to the development, but he does drain 95% of his water across that road and on to me. Um, once he drains to a certain level, he holds an awful lot of water right there on that property. And the other big deal that I have that goes on back there is mosquito infestation from that water that sits until it dries up, because the grounds back there have no seepage whatsoever. It's all clay. It saturates. It does not soak into the ground. So until the sun comes out to dry it up, so you can imagine what my home was like during that last, what, 12 to 14-day rain that we had back in January. You can only imagine how much water and, and mud I fought during that entire process. I have built up that property some since I've been there. I do intend to build up more, and the other thing I intend to do is to ask the Department of Public Works and get back with Chad Little and a couple of other people that I know in the DPW to come out there and help me dig some more ditches to properly drain that property once Wesley Place is built up, because I see this parish going nowhere but forward with their developments, and I understand that it's money for the parish. I don't strictly object to the subdivision itself. I just simply want to know that I'm not gonna flood out there where I'm at. And in those pictures that you'll be giving tonight, you'll see that I hold a lot of water right there at the very corner of my house. There is seepage there on those baseboards. I've changed those baseboards in that front room at least three or four times since I've had the home, because of seepage held on that wall whenever water is held there. It is a concrete home, but it does seep through the walls. Um, if the water becomes any higher as a result of slower drainage process, then I will hold more water, I'm quite sure, and that room, that front room will flood altogether on my home. And, uh, outside of that, that's the only things that I ask you guys to look at tonight. When I first came here, I came here as a very angry homeowner, and I still am a little bit angry with this parish in that sometimes the, these developments aren't looked closely enough at, but I feel you've had enough information in front of you all along to deny the project, and you have not done that yet. So I'm just gonna ask that you take those things into consideration as I am a current homeowner back there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kenny Tompley?
Kenny Tompley, 13206 Melissa Street, and I, I'm only, uh, I'm not an adjacent landowner, but I'm only 450 feet or so from the, from the property. Um, uh, I'd like to make the one comment that Barbara just stated, that you did deny this once, but of course, our, our, our system allows, uh, small change to come back as, as a, as a new, uh, application. Um, I was concerned on a comment last month, uh, about, uh, from, uh, Rodney's, uh, legal representative, that, uh, you're not, he's not legally responsible for downstream. Well, you know, I take that as, as, as an American citizen not too well, because if, what if our United States government wasn't responsible for the, the whole United States? So, uh, I, I think he is responsible for, for downstream, because that's where the water's coming from to, to me as a downstream, uh, landowner and homeowner. Uh, the larger cover across Black Bayou, uh, I stated before back in August that Black Bayou acts as a, a dam for me, as Melissa does, from, from the water that comes from this property. Sure, I know it's the same amount of water, it just, it'll just get there quicker. Um, not really sure why we have wetlands designation since they're so easily mitigated. Um, the drainage ordinance stated that, uh, you engineer it for a 10-year event, but what about a 20-year, 30-year, 40-year, 50-year? We haven't had, uh, a 20-year event, 30-year event since the 70s and 80s. Uh, concerned about that. Last night on the news, Beaumont got, uh, uh, five inches of rain in, in a little over an hour. It was stated on the news last night. Uh, you know, we engineer for, for a fixed amount of rain, but, you know, rainfall is, is such a variable every time it falls. Um, our pumping station has been the greatest asset that we've had put in this parish, but, uh, if those things ever happen to die during a major rainstorm, then it will become the lakes of Santa Monica again. Uh, every cubic foot of clay mountain we're building in this parish displaces seven and a half foot, uh, seven and a half gallons of water. On an acre with a three-inch rainfall, that's over 81,000 gallons of water that has to go somewhere else, because it's been displaced by concrete, rooftops, and, uh, and fill. Uh, the morally responsible thing, uh, is, to do these days is overrun by our, you know, this is where I think our legal system, which we have to have, uh, it hurts us because it, you know, in these type of situations, uh, the legal system could hurt us, and, you know, the legal system was put in place to protect us. So the morally responsible thing would be, as Rodney stated in August after this meeting outside, and I've been knowing Rodney for 40 years.
30 seconds, sir.
And, uh, and he stated that he did not want to hurt anyone, and, and I believe him, but in the long run, he spent a lot of money, as was said at the last meeting, and, uh, you know, I, I just wish that, uh, the morally responsible thing wasn't, uh, overruled or overran by, by money issues, but in, in our country, that's how it's, you know, gotten to be. I appreciate, uh, all you've done for this. You did deny it once. Uh, I'm asking you to deny it again, because even though the, the engineering states that, um, the functionality just scares me to death as a landowner.
Time, sir.
I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Myers?
How you doing? Ralph Myers, I live on the east side. The, um, we had heard that there were some state laws regarding drainage, particularly along highways, and I think the last time he, they made a presentation, had some talk about, uh, improving the, the road, the ditch along the road. Well, we contacted the highway department, was referred to, uh, drainage engineer, to a engineer. He's in charge of water resources. His name is Ronnie Robinson, and he lives in Ascension Parish. And we asked if he would come look at the ditch, and he said he would. So he came out and he pointed out that, uh, they do not permit widening or deepening of their roadside roads. I presume this to, uh, protect the roadbed, and they also have a, uh, I don't know if that thing will show it. He also said they have a, a requirement for a development whose outlet is to a cross covert, that it be rated for a 50-year event rather than the 10 and 5 that is referred to over here all the time. So I have, uh, my brother got some, you've seen these pictures before, but my brother had had them enlarged, and they're much, much easier to see. This is the drainage ditch, and then this is the roadside ditch. Now you see down here is where the, uh, the cross cover is, about 30 feet from the other ends of the property. So, there is, uh, also a provision, which I noticed in the, uh, subdivision regulations. Uh, it's in, uh, 36.101. The, uh, last part of the, the last sentence in there says, "Particular consideration should be given to the retention of marginal land that is subject to periodic inundation for recreational or natural conservation uses."
30 seconds, sir.
Okay, so I think this is proof that it's in periodic inundation. If you want to look at these papers?
Uh, the commissioners would like to look at these photographs.
Let me pass them on.
Okay. You go ahead and just pass them around to Ms. Slime, and she'll pass them. Get them around everybody.
Peggy Myers?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would like to approach the bench and hand
I would like to make this part of the official minutes. I received this email from Mr. John Herman on January thirtieth of this year. Peggy, as per our conversation, the Rodney Sheets project was returned in October of
out pamphlets to each one of your commissioners.
All right, please.
two thousand and six.
Thank you.
Because of a lack of response on their behalf in providing necessary information important to the evaluation of this project, as far as we know, the applicant has not reapplied at this time. Yesterday, I received an email from Mr. Martin Meyer. He stated, "This reiterates the message below. We have not received a resubmitted application for Mr. Sheets as of today. There was a field inspection on the property on April eighteenth. It was determined that part of the property is wetlands, but a violation was also found on the property. A letter dated July twelfth was sent from the LDEQ requesting further information regarding the LDEQ 401 per net. There was no response from the developer. Their file on this property is now listed as inactive since they did not get a response. LDEQ states that since more than thirty days have passed since they sent their request for more information, the developer will have to reapply to the USA COE and LDEQ. At the planning commission meeting on August ninth, Mr. Scott Courtwright asked what was the status of the 404 wetland permit. Mr. Sheets stated the permit was in process. No mention was made by Mr. Sheets about the letter sent from the LDEQ the month before." "From all I have been told by the Corps of Engineers, there is no application on file for this property, Wesley Place. It appears to me that there is no 404 permit, 401 permit, and mitigation."
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
Nothing has been done as of today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day. When I were up here again, I'm sure you all are tired of hearing about Wesley Place. You would think this thing is a seven-hundred-and-fifty-home, huge subdivision going in, but it's not. It's a relatively small development, but you see how vehemently opposed the public is to it. This is what, our fourth meeting. In my experience, I haven't seen the amount of public response to any meetings, or I'm sorry, any subdivisions, like I've seen to this one. I, I mean, I, I feel that although by the letter of the law, by the skin of his teeth, some of the requirements for the subdivision may be in place, but as, as I know you're aware, a lot of the flooding issues and the subdivision regulations are somewhat outdated for the growth that the, that the parish is seeing. I mean, there's a, there's a revised drainage ordinance on the books right now that's going through the different committees to be, to be passed. I don't see how in good conscience, when you have a development that's in such a highly flood-prone area, that you can approve it when you have something that's on the cusp of, you know, potentially being able to address these sort of issues. Like Kenny said, and we said in the past, you know, it may work on paper, it may work in a computer model, but if the functionality doesn't work and the subdivision's already built, who's going to pay the price? What's going to be the, what's going to be the repercussions for that? It's going to be all of the existing landowners, like myself. It's not going to be the new people who are moving into these homes. I am an environmental consultant. I do deal with 404 permits, 401 permits. They are very simple to get. Like Kenny said, it's, it's almost too easy to mitigate wetlands in this day and age. And if the developer can't even, you know, proceed and get something as simple as that, it does not give me much confidence when you start looking at the bigger construction issues, the maintenance issues regarding the flooding. I just, I don't see why I should, or the general public, or you commissioners, if you can't follow through with the little things, then why should you, what's the expectation you're going to be able to follow through with the big picture, with the serious issues? You know, for these reasons, and the reasons that have been stated in the last five meetings, I respectfully request that you deny the subdivision again, based on this information, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Terry Tomplay?
How you doing, Seena? I'm Terry Tomplay. I live on the west side of the subdivision, Wesley subdivision. And the only question I got to ask is, if something happened to our property in the back, which is Ms. Barbara and myself, I want to know who would be responsible down the line? Like, I know a contractor, a developer, has got one year to build it, and then I don't think they're responsible after that. If y'all pass the subdivision tonight, are y'all responsible for this, or is the parish of Ascension if we get water in our house? I'm asking Mr. Maltzow that question. I'd like to have it answered tonight, because I've asked it the first month when we came here, and, you know, I never got no answer from that. Are y'all going to be responsible, or the parish of Ascension? I'd like for you to answer that question.
Unless I'm mistaken, and legal counsel can confirm this or whatever, that's, that become, it's a civil matter. It'd go to civil court.
So in other words, y'all can put this subdivision in there, because you're turning to sue. That ain't right. I mean, here, y'all, y'all board members up here, y'all know she's going to get water in our house. The ditch that crosses in there, I'm going to cover it up if I got to.
Mr. Tomplay, you have made that threat every time you have addressed this commission. Now, I'm, I'm sorry, but you know, you, you make a threat like that, and it doesn't sway the commission. You're going to do what you have to do. That's, that's all I can tell you. Now, we have laws that we have to follow. And then say that we like the laws necessarily, but we have to follow them. Now, if something happens to your house, if you get water in your house, then it's, you, I'm sorry, you have to get a lawyer, and you have to go to court.
So you'll build a subdivision, don't care about those people that are on side of it, is what you're telling me? You're not representing the public then, you're representing the, the developers? Is that the question? I mean, that's sound like to me. I mean, anybody in this office, do they agree with me or what? I mean, you going with the developer right now. That ain't right. I mean, I'm telling you right now, because I know, because I've been living there all my life. I was born and I was raised there, all my life. You tell me who going to be responsible down the road? I don't have to buy flood insurance. I'm not in the flood zone. I built my house years ago to what I was told to build it to. Now, if these new laws come up, hey, y'all dealing with it, not me. My house is there. My question is, who is going to be responsible if anything happened to me or Ms. Barbara?
And that would be decided by the court.
Mr. Tomplay, you need to consult a private attorney. I cannot give you legal advice. This board's not a lawyer. That's what you need to go consult a private.
Well, when I asked this question several months ago, I wasn't told that, because I asked y'all the first meeting. You never answered my question. Y'all never did, and I came back four times.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Thirty seconds? Okay, my question is, if they do pass this subdivision, me and Ms. Barbara gave the right-of-way of the ditch, offsetting fifteen feet of the property line. I'd like to go ahead and put the ditch on the property line all the way to the back. That's a twenty-five-foot offset, from thirty-foot to twenty-five-foot. If you look on the map, it's offset in the back. Middle of my property, over to Ms. Barbara's. But I'd like for y'all to go ahead and check out and tell me.
Time.
Yeah.
No one else? Comments, questions from commissioners?
I'd like to ask a question, and I'm not quite sure who to address this to. Someone stated that they met with DOTD, and that any cross pipe would have to be designed to a fifty-year. Is staff, is that accurate? And if so, is it designed? Is the pipe that we're, we're, we have on the plan proposed to a fifty-year?
They, it is a state highway for them to put a new culvert across the road that will need to meet DOTD approval. I know that DOTD, when they construct, do their own design for their own highways, they do crossings at a fifty-year event. In this case, I'm not sure, given the, the situation at hand, whether they would require, obviously, the two culverts there are not, I couldn't tell you what storm event they're can handle, because it's not much, it's overtopping the road very frequently. I can't predict what storm event that DOTD is going to require for the crossing, but they will analyze it, and it will have to meet their approval as well.
And I'll add the legal part of that. Just because they get, anybody gets preliminary approval here, if they're on a state highway, they've got to deal with DOTD to get a permit to deal with DOTD. Just to put a driveway on DOTD, you got to deal with DOTD, and we have nothing to do with that. If you want to connect anything to them, you have to deal with them. Whatever you do here has no impact on DOTD. We could approve a subdivision, and DOTD can say, "No, you're not going to do that," and it goes away. They're not able to do it, but that's, that's DOTD's issues and not ours.
Well, Neil, you're saying that that's DOTD's issue and not ours, but if it changes up what the ERA has reviewed as far as the construction plans, it seems to me that it is our issue.
Well, he'd have to come back here with that, with a major change like that. DOTD, if, if their requirements are more stringent than ours, they're not going to, just because you approve it, they're not going to let him do it.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if he change, if he does change it up, it.
It's a major change.
Yeah, I mean, it is, in a sense, still our problem, so to speak.
And that's, and that's, but what I'm saying is, the fact that you would approve a subdivision based on our standards, would not require DOTD to give him a permit to do whatever he wants to do on their road. Another issue that we run into, that we're seeing all the time now, is on the major thoroughfare, is DOTD is requiring turning lanes and all that we normal, that we don't require, that they're saying, "If you want to use our major road, you got to put a turning lane in." I know that's happening on the Adeline Highway a lot. So the fact that someone meets our rules and regulations, they're approved by us, gives us, gives them no, nothing to do with DEQ, EPA, DOTD. They've got to go get all their own permits to do that, and if they don't, they can't do the project, because they don't, they need those permits to proceed.
I guess, you know, my question really is, is that, you know, if, if, if the design of that crossroad is going to be different, would that not have an effect on the retention and the detention in, in the project?
It, it would, and I would say in this condition, because of the sensitivity of this crossing, that if they go for a state permit and DOTD disagrees that the thirty-inch pipe that's proposed is not the correct size, whether it should be smaller or larger, I would think that that would need to be brought back to our attention, and we would be at the direction of the commission as to whether or not that change would substantiate coming back to the commission, or whether that's something that we would approve the construction plan simply because DOTD has approved that crossing. We can, I've never had this situation occur, but there's never been so much sensitivity with a particular crossing size or size of pipe. So, I mean, we can, we can go at whatever direction the commission would choose. And there is a reasonable chance that DOTD may come up and want a different-sized pipe. I don't know.
Does that answer your question, who will? Satisfied with that? Scott, I thought you had a question?
Yeah. Mr. Sheets, in regards to the, the Corps of Engineers, what, what say you on that matter?
We originally applied to the Corps, and we did not finalize everything, because we didn't have a final ruling from you guys. But as you well know, we cannot build a subdivision without satisfying the Corps of Engineers. So we were hoping to get a favorable comment tonight or approval from you guys, and then we were going to reapply.
I, I do know that the Corps of Engineers, on one of their checklist requirements, when you apply for a permit, they want to know that the local governing planning commissioner body has approved the project. So he is correct, that they are, they are on standstill with the Corps until they gain approval from the planning commission.
I can't build a subdivision without satisfying the Corps of Engineers. It's that simple. That's, that's as plain as I can say it.
Are you aware of any violations that have been found on this property?
I read that report, and I didn't see anything about a violation. And I have Mr. David Tomplay's agency as my wetlands delineator, and I'm sure he would have brought that to my attention if, if that was accurate. And here again, if there is a problem, I've got to correct it before I can develop the subdivision, but I'm, I'm unaware of that.
What is a violation? Scott, can you?
Well, when you're looking at that drawing, David Tomplay produced the image here, and all of the black line is his submittal to the Corps of Engineers. And the Corps of Engineers field inspector gets his submittal, his map, then he goes and makes a field visit. When he makes a field visit, he takes that map and makes notes. When he gets back to his office, he scans in that drawing with his notes, and that's what we see before us, is a reproduction scan image with the field inspector from the Corps of Engineers notes. So David Tomplay didn't write the orange box with violation, nor did he write Waters of the United States. The Corps of Engineers field inspector did. So the question of, what does violation mean? Either you look in the report, maybe it spells it out more in his response, his report response, but that's an excellent question. I don't know what the term violation means. I don't know what he's talking about in that particular case. Typically, it would be, there's more wetlands than what you said there was. That could be, I wouldn't call that a violation. I haven't seen it called a violation, but I don't know what he means there.
Can we ask Ms. Peggy if she knows what it is, since she's the one talking about it?
Yeah, you can, you can pose a question to anyone that has addressed the commission.
Ms. Peggy, do you know what it is, what the violation is? Do you have any more information about it?
If you'll look at your map that was in your pamphlet, and you look down at the bottom right-hand side, which, there's more shading of red, that's where the violation is. I do not know exactly what the violation is, but it's there.
Violation could be, I'm sorry, the violation could be anything from someone coming in there and damaged the wetland, to they filled the wetland, to they dug out the wetland.
Maybe they drove a truck in there and broke vegetation, or any of those. Maybe they started doing work before.
I do think it needs to be checked out. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a comment made from the Corps that someone, prior to me purchasing the property, had dumped some dirt at the entrance going into the property. That may be what it is. Is, is that the area that's red?
It could be, that could be the driveway.
Yeah, that may be what the infraction is, and they're forcing me, instead, that's where, I think, Mr. Courtwright, at the first meeting, you had asked me about how, how many acres were wetlands, and I told you approximately one. Well, they, they forced me to, they, they created a larger area there because of some dirt that was brought in as an entrance off of the culvert. I think you ladies had gone out there.
Yeah, you can pose a question to anyone that has addressed the commission.
Ms. Peggy, do you know what it is, what the violation is? Do you have any more information about it?
If you'll look at your map that was in your pamphlet, and you look down at the bottom right-hand side, which there's more shading of red, that's where the violation is. I do not know exactly what the violation is. But it's there.
Violation could be... I'm sorry, the violation could be anything from someone coming in there and damaged the wetland, to they filled the wetland, to they dug out the wetland.
Maybe they drove a truck in there and broke vegetation, or any of those. Maybe they started doing work before.
I do think it needs to be checked out. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a comment made from the Corps that someone, prior to me purchasing the property, had dumped some dirt at the entrance going into the property. That may be what it is. Is that the area that's red?
It could be. That could be the driveway.
Yeah, that may be what the infraction is, and they're forcing me instead... that's where, I think, Mr. Court, right at the first meeting, you had asked me about how many acres were wetlands, and I told you approximately one. Well, they forced me to... they created a larger area there because of some dirt that was brought in as an entrance off of the culvert. I think you ladies had gone out there before. You notice when you drove in, they had a little roadway built, so that was the area in question.
Let me ask you this question. Did you... you said that occurred before you purchased the property, and you've purchased it since.
That's correct.
Do you have any of that in writing or anything like that? That would... that is what the violation is? You don't really know? That's just your best guess?
That's just my assumption.
Okay. And that would... in all fairness, that's what it would mean. If you see a violation, it's vegetation's broken, there's been fill. In other words, there's been work done there in between the jurisdictional determination or the jurisdictional diagram and the determination by the Corps, before they've officially claimed it. Some work's been done there.
That's what it looks like. I think the guy that I bought it from may have gone in there and started clearing a little bit out right at the driveway entrance, and he dumped a load of dirt in there, I think, and made a little way where he could get in without, you know, having to stay on the highway.
What's a little confusing for me is, on this map, it's got a big stamp right in the middle of it that's traditionally stamped when they receive the map that says "approved", jurisdictional determination. But in the email, it says they didn't approve. They're waiting for additional information. So, that's a little confusing for me, why I would... but in all fairness, he can't do anything until it's approved anyway, so...
And there's a timeframe, isn't there?
Absolutely.
You see, my timeframe ran out, so we have to reapply, and that's basically why it's showing that it's been set aside or whatever. But we will have to reapply if we get approved here tonight. And here again, I'll say, we have to satisfy the Corps before I can do anything out there.
And the Corps only looks at the wetland impacts. The Corps does not look at adjacent property, just for the audience to know that. They only look at the wetlands you're destroying, damaging, causing harm to, and make you mitigate those particular wetlands for the same match. And sometimes, it may be a higher match, but they make you put back somewhere in money or mitigation points, or banks, or credits, or whatever. They're gonna make you mitigate for that particular... I think it's 1.9 acres you have on your diagram.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate if the young lady that presented you all with the document would also provide us with one? Because apparently, there's information that we did not have, at least certainly I did not have, on behalf of Rodney Sheets.
I'd have to see if she has other... apparently, she has no other copies of it.
If it came from the Corps, we'd get a copy.
Yeah, all right. If Mr. Sheets is telling me, if it's something that the Corps has provided her, it seems... well, I won't go into it, but it strikes me as odd that Mr. Sheets had... did not already have that information. What I would like to say is that Mr. Sheets has somewhat rode a little hurt on me through this process, because his intent has always been to try to help to improve the situation, and by no means wants to be the sole cause of making it worse. And I've sat through several meetings, as have you all, very patiently, and have heard people essentially make the same type of discussions. And we have heard those. And the redrafting of the plan was designed by Mr. Sheets' engineers to try to address as many of those as he could do so, including separate meetings with different engineering people and with DPW, and then again with Mr. Rube. And I am sitting here tonight realizing the difficulty that you all have to do, and I feel somewhat astonished at the magnitude of the job that you all are having to do, particularly in this parish with drainage concerns. I would hope that the people that have approached you tonight realize that y'all are seeing what these people do. They are looking to protect not only you all, but they're also interested in Mr. Sheets' rights being protected as well, if he's doing what the law requires him to do.
Sir, please address the commission.
Fair enough, fair enough. And I apologize to anyone that was offended by the comment. But what I'm just simply trying to say is that, as best as Mr. Sheets understands the requirements of the application, and then the concerns that were addressed not only by members of the public, which we've heard again tonight, essentially the same ones, we feel that we've met those requirements. And obviously, the one lady did bring up another concern, but that's another step in the process, as we understand it, and that could be denied at that point in time. And the same thing was addressed with DOTD. I mean, all these permits, as we understand it, are an ongoing process. You merely kick off the start of everything, but it's become obvious to me, and hopefully to everyone else, that your involvement is a large part of it. And we hope everyone appreciates what you all are trying to do.
Thank you. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Sheets, in closing, in regards to the wetlands issue, this is a public document. You can find it very easily, what we have in front of us. David Tomplay should know who your permit writer is from the Corps. Very easy to get in touch with the permit writer, refer to the contract or the reference number, the job number, if you will, and go from there to clear up the misgivings or the discrepancy between your delineation and the violation portion, or whatever the case is.
Comments, questions, commissioners?
I have just a simple question. On the scale that you've used for this layout, what is the scale for it?
It should be on the top.
It doesn't match. And I run into this problem, because, go back a page, it's a question on the right-of-way going into the highway. That's okay for parish road, because it's in front of my house. But when you get to a state highway, you're showing a property line going into the state highway right-of-way, and I know that doesn't happen. And then you try and put the 60-foot dimension that you called out here on here, and it doesn't measure, and then you go to the lots, and it doesn't match. So, I get all kind of questions now coming in my mind, whether your wetlands are right, et cetera, et cetera.
The scale of the drawing is 1 inch equals 60.
It doesn't match. That's what I just told you.
The scale of the drawing is 1 inch equals 60. The property line does go to the highway right-of-way. The state highway does not own that property in fee title.
Okay, well, take your 60 feet, and you put 60 feet or whatever on one of your lot lines that says 75. It's not matching up. I don't get an equal measurement. Even if you took the 60 feet, which is a highway right-of-way, if this is 60 feet on your graphic scale, you put it on the 60 feet for the highway, it doesn't match 60 feet. Should be right on the money.
The right-of-way line from the property line is 30 feet, which is half of the right-of-way.
Are you showing both sides of the highway right-of-way?
Yes.
If this graphic chart at the top is... if that's 60 feet, and I put it down at the bottom, that's not 60 feet. It's a lot smaller. So, I just question the dimension here.
The other right-of-way line is shown at 20 foot rather than 30 feet from the property line. But I mean, that's... we could fix it at 30 feet.
But then I raise a question. If that's wrong, the lots should be 75. And it doesn't all match up?
Lots?
You got a scale there? Is that what Dave brought you?
Yeah.
Check that for me, please.
Lots are 75. The ones that's shown as 75 are 75.
We got a little one. All right, let's see what we got. This is 1 inch equals 60. See, if I come up here, that's not 60. So, what am I supposed to...
It tells 1 inch equals 60.
Inch. See, that's an inch. That's an inch. It's not 1 inch.
I'm not sure why it scales like that. I mean, it is 1 inch equals 60. As I have to be up for somebody, I don't know why. It's live by computer, I don't know why it's like that.
I don't even know. It scales wrong, a little scale. So, something's wrong.
Well, the mark scale is apparently is different, if it doesn't make it 1 inch.
And that's my question, is what is it? That's why I just wanted to...
The scale is 1 inch equals 60. I mean, it's the other side of the right-of-way, which is off our property.
Fine, that's me doing it. Move along. It's fine. I want to make sure. The scale was just wrong. Not just, but... Check your drawing. If that's wrong, then you did this wrong.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
What's the commission?
Quick question for you. Any limitations on the commission tonight, as far as what we're allowed to look at?
The commission has to act tonight.
No, 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 that's not... I know we have to act tonight. What I'm questioning is, as far as, I mean, are we only looking tonight... I'm not... I didn't think we were, but were we only looking at one aspect of this development tonight, as far as like drainage? Or are we still looking at the whole development as a whole, as far as all issues?
This matter is up for preliminary approval tonight.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, I'm gonna take a stab at this one. I have talked about this with staff. I've talked about this with our ERA, and I feel that we have to trust them to do their job. At the same time, I want to word my motion in a way that's gonna protect the existing So, I want to put some conting... I want to make a motion to approve with contingencies, those being that the sequence of construction not worsen the flooding situation. I talked to O'Neill today, and I understand that this subdivision will not be allowed to use Procedure B, so it can't be bonded, so the progress can be monitored, and that the infrastructure be complete before final approval. And the other thing is that it be monitored, I guess by boxcar, or it be monitored so that the existing ditch never be worsened, the existing flooding situation never be worsened in the construction.
Is that... that's it?
I think that's it.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Sherri Slimon.
I'll second it, and I'd like to ask the maker of the motion to consider that any change to that cross-pipe be brought back to us, if she's willing to accept that as an additional condition.
Okay.
So, any change than what's shown on the map?
Any change than what's shown on the map.
Okay, so, I have an amended motion to approve by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Julio with condition by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'd like staff to make sure they put Bill Ruse's email in the comment section. You know, he responded to his comments, the two comments.
As far as the minutes?
Yeah.
I think staff will... I think that would already pretty much be done.
Good.
Okay. Motion passes. Item 10C, I mean, I'm sorry, 10B, Belmaison.
I'm DeWitt Leidner with McLennan Associates. I just want to hand out something before we begin.
She was asking if there were any more pictures.
I believe it was deferred last month. There were, I think, three issues. First issue was the utility companies. The second issue was DHH, and third issue being the size of the lot. I think it's Lot 7. If they could fit a house on there where the gas pipeline servitude was. And that's what I just handed out right there. And I think y'all have those letters from the utility companies stating that they've reviewed the space allocation and the DHH letter from the parish.
What's the square footage on this house?
3,000 square feet, I believe. I think it's on handout. These are large lots, they're acre lots, so...
You sure they're gonna let you pave a portion of the driveway over the pipeline?
Let me see where you're talking about. What do you have circled there?
You've got a little bit of pavement showing a driveway, showing over the pipeline you said.
Your right-of-way, your drawing is going into the pipeline servitude.
That's something. If not, so be it.
Comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Can I clarify one thing?
Sure.
Mr. Ruse, in our homework packet, Mr. Ruse's comment that it was not acceptable was when it was going to be a public road. Okay, and now that it's a private road, that's not an issue.
But I think we should add a note to the... on the platte that these roads are not eligible to be accepted into the parish, because he does object to that.
The other comments or questions from commissioners? Item 10C, review of PUD conceptual plan, submitted checklist, PUD final development plan, submittal checklist, SBUDD final development plan, submittal checklist, and PUD, SBUDD final plat, submittal checklist. We got this in our packets this month, so I'm hoping the commissioners had the opportunity to browse over it, review it a little bit.
Mr. Chair, this is a matter that was of significant importance to Commissioner Bardwell, and I would ask that we defer any action until Mr. Bardwell's had a opportunity to review and participate, since he's absent tonight.
As far as the adoption of policy?
Yes, sir.
I think we'd have to hold a public hearing on that anyway, wouldn't we? Wouldn't? Okay. All right, we'll wait for Mr. Bardwell.
Thank you very much.
Pretty good job, I just...
Yeah. Item 11. Make a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn by Scott Courtwright.
Second.
Seconded by Paige Bet. Now, is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. We'll reconvene as a zoning commission in 10 minutes.